Planning Commission of the City of Wilsonville for Wednesday, March 13th, 2019 is now in session. Will our clerk please call the roll?
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Posma.
Here.
Ron Heberlin. Peter Hurley.
Here.
Cameron Mezba.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon. Simon Springall. Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Springall will be joining us shortly. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I thank everyone for coming out on this beautiful March evening. This is a time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. We have one public hearing item. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. You have an opportunity later on during the hearing to address that topic. For the Commission, minutes of our February 13th meeting have been distributed. Are there any additions or corrections to be made? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as distributed. This brings us to our main business of the evening, which is a legislative hearing on the Town Center Plan redevelopment. We will be devoting approximately, hopefully, 90 minutes to this subject. Before we begin, I'm obliged to read the ground rules. Matters before the Planning Commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different than the quasi-judicial hearings conducted by the city's Development Review Board. The Planning Commission would like to hear from anyone who has testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the Planning Commission. If you wish to testify tonight, please fill out one of the cards on the table at the side and hand it to our clerk before or immediately following your testimony. Because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you are testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address on the testimony card or at the beginning of your comments. When you testify, please address your comments to the criteria that will be reviewed by the city staff at the start of the hearing. Some of the issues that come before the Planning Commission are fairly complicated, and for that reason, we especially appreciate any specific recommendations or suggestions you may have. We will ask you to avoid redundant testimony. If you agree with testimony that has already been given, just tell us that. If we have a large number of people interested in testifying, we may limit the time allotted to each. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address, or if you prefer not to state your address, allow it in the public forum. State that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted for the record and speak into the microphone. At the end of your testimony, members of the Commission may have questions for you. Thank you for taking the time to come here tonight and to help us deal with these matters. I have only one card. Are there others that wish to speak? Then we'll hear to begin.
Wait, we need the presentation first.
Of course. You need to know what you're speaking about. I should be presenting our Planning Director, Miranda Betschel, who is going to introduce the topic and the staff involved in the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Greenfield, Commissioners. Again, my name is Miranda Betschel, Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville. And I am very excited and proud to introduce the team that is here tonight that has been working so hard on this project for over the past two years. Tonight, coming up here is Molly Cooney-Mesker and Alex Doopy from MIG. They will be giving the presentation at the front end. And with me here tonight is also Associate Planner with the City, Kim Riebel, the Capital Projects Engineering Manager, Zach Weigel, and the Economic Development Manager, Jordan Vance, who are all here to help answer any questions that may come up during the discussion. I am very excited that tonight we are having a legislative public hearing on the Town Center Plan. I just have a few remarks I'd like to make, and then the presentation will be about 15 minutes, which will allow plenty of time for public comment and discussion by all of you after that. I just want to say upfront that I am grateful for the vision and foresight to do this project from our Tourism Committee, our Urban Renewal Strategic Plan, and importantly, the City Council for establishing the Town Center Plan as a priority goal. And then the commitment from all of you sitting up here with me this evening that have helped shepherd this project through and direct staff to engage the full community in a very meaningful way. As you know, we've been actively working with the community over the past two years, and I am incredibly proud of the work that they have done and the work of the city. We've been out in the schools with our primary schools, doing middle school curriculum, focus groups with both high schools and the Oregon Institute of Technology. We've partnered with the various schools to reach out to Latino families that are in our community, and we've met with PTA groups and booster clubs. We've spent monthly visits at the Wilsonville Community Sharing and lunches at the Community Center. We have had a lot of hard work from our business and property owners who have met with us one-on-one. They've come to focus groups at City Hall, and they've taken time out of their very busy schedules to provide us with critical input that directly helped shape the plan and particularly the implementation actions that are in it. I want to actually provide an extra thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, who have been excellent partners on this project and helped us to host, co-partner and host a number of events in the community around economic development. Residents, employees and business owners in Wilsonville have attended focus groups, workshops, open houses, taken three different surveys, answered two years' worth of questions of the month, online at the library and at events that we were at. They talked to us when we were out in the community at Fun Run, Fun in the Park, Rotary Concerts, Brew Fest, trivia nights. And it is really their commitment and their vision that have set the priorities that are outlined in the plan that's in front of you this evening. I'm also incredibly proud of the work of the task force. Many members were here this evening. I'm not sure any of them have stuck around for the hearing, but they really rolled up their sleeves, did the hard work, and stayed true to the community input they were hearing, but really helped us to work through a lot of the details that came through in this plan. I want to acknowledge all of those who are here tonight, who have also followed the plan and contributed to the plan and who are with us this evening to hopefully contribute more. I also want to directly thank each one of you that's up here with me for your diligence and your thoughtfulness around the implementation. You know, we've spent several work sessions now for the last six months working through the details, and I want to thank you for that. And then I just want to take a brief moment to recognize city staff who aren't here this evening. We had a lot of support from SMART, particularly on the transit section that's in the plan, but also allowing us to advertise community engagement on their buses. And our communications team, all the planning and engineering staff, Tammy, who is probably out in the hallway right now doing most of the work, who has been the huge support to this project throughout it. And of course, our very steady and thoughtful leader who's sitting beside me, Chris Namso, the Community Development Director. So with that, our agenda tonight, as I mentioned, staff will provide a summary of the plan and the planning process for the record and those that haven't been following it as closely as we have. We will highlight the modifications that were made to the plan and to the Development Code based on your final work session in January, as well as the council's work session in February. After that brief 15-minute presentation, attendees in the audience will have an opportunity to provide comment to the Planning Commission. After that testimony is received, staff can address any additional questions that the Planning Commission might have, at which point staff will request the Commission to discuss the issue at hand and then take action. I wanted to outline that the action this evening is in the form of a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the Wilsonville Town Center Plan and amendments to the Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan Text and Map, the zoning map and the Wilsonville Development Code. And I just quickly want to note for the audience members that the Town Center Plan and the land use actions that apply are to the area that is within and adjacent to the Town Center Loop in Wilsonville, and this is the map that's before you. One last housekeeping item before I hand it over to Alex and Molly from MIG is I just want to mention that the materials in front of you that are being entered into the record are resolution, you have Resolution LP 19-003, along with Exhibit A, which is the staff report and its attachments, which are Attachment A, the Wilsonville Town Center Plan and its supporting appendices; Attachment B, which is the Wilsonville Town Center Plan Findings Report, which outlines compliance with all state, regional and local requirements; and Attachment C, the Planning Commission Public Record. This is a very voluminous record. As I mentioned before, we had over 100 events, and there are over 1,700 pages, most of which were linked to you electronically to save trees. As amended, Attachment C has been also amended to include an ODOT letter of support that was dated March 12th, 2019. That's up at the dais, as well as a letter from Mr. Stevenson dated March 12th, 2019 as well. Public hearing record was posted and on the website for over seven days. Hearing notices posted and mailed to 62 property owners and sent to over 270 interested parties via email, noticed in the Boons Ferry Messenger, meeting all state requirements for, and in the spokesman, sorry, meeting all state requirements for public review. So that is it from me, all the logistics and record information. And I will hand it over to Molly Cooney-Mesker and Alex Doopy from MIG. Thank you.
Thanks, Miranda. So we want to take just a few minutes today to kind of take a quick walk down memory lane for those of us who have been here through the whole process and for anyone who hasn't to provide a brief overview of what this process has entailed. It's been a, you know, more than two-year process with an immense amount of engagement from the community that's resulted in the robust, community-driven plan that's in front of you today. Miranda gave a very quick but thorough overview of many of the events and activities that have been involved in this plan. You know, the city has really had a commitment to this truly being a community-driven vision and plan, and with that, has hosted a multitude of events at various venues and with various activities. Through those, we've heard from a diversity of community members, including a strong youth voice. And while there has been a range of perspectives, pretty quickly into the process, we saw some common threads emerge. And from these threads, with the help of the task force and yourself, the Planning Commission, we're able to create a planning framework that both guided the process going forward from this point and will also guide the implementation of the plan. The community input on parks, open spaces, land uses and transportation informed the initial building blocks, as we called them, that evolved eventually into the plan that you see today. Pretty soon into the process, we heard from community members that parks, open spaces, places to gather were a very important element, both the current Town Center but also what they envisioned for the future. So with these initial ideas, we presented the community with a few concepts of what that could look like. And there was a desire to sort of meld a couple of these, the Emerald Chain and the Solar System. We move forward with what we call the Emerald Chain, which is anchored by the future bicycle pedestrian bridge over I-5, connecting down through Town Center to Memorial Park. With the transportation network and street grid, we heard from community members the importance of a walkable street network, something that was pedestrian-friendly, that was accessible and still accessible by car to the places that people go now and will go in the future. And so we started to, you know, come up with what that could look like in terms of a future street grid. This is very initially where that Main Street concept came, the extension of Park Place to create the connection through Town Center. That was identified in the very beginning as something that was missing. And with land uses, the community members said from the very beginning they wanted more active land uses. They wanted a mix of uses. They wanted places that, you know, stayed open after, you know, typical work hours, a more vibrant community gathering places. And we started to look at, you know, how that could happen in a way that is compatible with the current land uses to make sure that there was a harmonious sort of connection to what existed. We moved forward refining those building blocks into what became the community design concept. And here, this looks very similar to what you see today, and, you know, it's a slightly sketchier, messier version of it. But the community design concept took those kind of three building blocks and the community's preference for those and combined them and identified sort of these sub-districts that included the land uses and types of activity that people wanted to see. We took that back out to the community and really got into the detail of, you know, what were these land uses in the right places? Was the street grid looking like something that people wanted to use? And we started to make little refinements and little tweaks. And then from there, we started to dig into what does it look like on the ground? You know, people really connected with this idea of the Main Street, and what is the experience as we walk along the Main Street? We went back out to the community, and people were able to, you know, really specify what they want to see on that Main Street and even experience the type of experiences that the plan was laying out that people would be able to have on the Main Street with this example of the, you know, two-way bike lane. So with all of that community input and the kind of incremental refinement, we developed the proposed Town Center Plan with the land use, which you'll see is very similar to that sketchy, sketchy version, a little bit more clearly illustrated here. And these building blocks really were formalized into this land use plan with, which includes the land uses, the street grid and the park system. And here you see it sort of pulled out, that Emerald Chain concept connecting Memorial Park up through the future pedestrian bike bridge, a street network that, you know, serves with streets that serve specific functions. So you see that Main Street and a local street grid that really serve, you know, the community, kind of slower traffic, pedestrians, bicycles, and the Wilsonville Road and Town Center Loop to, you know, get people through and around Town Center. And here we see how that network sort of plays out on the ground and how those different street types work together to create a street network, a transportation network, that really serves all users. On top of this, you see the multimodal network and how that connects to the streets. So you see that, you know, for both pedestrian bicycle facilities, there's some connections that are currently missing that people, really allow people to come down from the pedestrian bicycle bridge and down through Town Center, accessing many of the destinations along the way. We looked at the types of development that are feasible and the land that's available to see what's likely to develop where. The market analysis, as we've discussed in the past, shows what's more likely to develop first due to current market conditions and what will likely develop later. And from that, we start to see what development could look like starting now into 20 years into the future. So as we know, this is an incremental transformation. It will not happen all tomorrow. From the, you know, current sort of some of the vacant parcels we see here, the large amount of parking, we start to look from that to 10 years into the future. And we see what is feasible and what is likely. We see development and infill on, you know, undeveloped parcels or underutilized parking. We see the Main Street comes in and some development starts to happen around that. We see some of the local street network come in as development happens. Looking 10 to 20 years in the future, we really see that more amenities start to come in, that that pedestrian and bicycle, you know, bridge comes in, that the network starts to take shape. And there's more of a diversity of types of development. This is when we might see offices, more mixed use. At full build-outs, now we're looking more likely beyond 20 years, this is what Town Center looks like, the complete vision for Town Center. We see, you know, multiple-mode transportation network fully built out, highly-active land uses come in at this point. And when all of the development types that were tested likely become feasible. So I'm going to turn it over to Alex to talk a little bit about how we get there to that 20-year vision.
So with the plan, you know, over half of the plan is dedicated to very specific implementation measures, whether they're quick wins for things that you could do, you know, essentially today or with the adoption of the plan, to much longer-term strategies, which include, you know, larger infrastructure projects or even, you know, management, like parking management, for example, that aren't necessarily needed today but might, over time, as the area develops, become more necessary to manage certain aspects of Town Center. None of these things are new. These are all things that you've seen before. We've maintained the implementation category structure that you've seen throughout the previous plan elements. But I wanted to just step through just a few things that, just to highlight a few things, both from what is adopted with this plan versus the short, medium and long-term strategies as examples of the types of things that have been maintained through the plan development. So with recommendations tonight for the Town Center Plan, there are a couple of immediate changes that would begin to occur, and that is to the Development Code as well as the Comprehensive Plan. And then there are minor changes to the parking requirements within Town Center, generally to provide more flexibility for mixed-use development within Town Center itself. For the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code, we've been talking a lot about that in previous meetings. I'll talk about a few modifications that we've had since our last meeting, but generally, these are very similar to what you've seen in the past. In terms of short-term actions, there are a number of short-term actions, and these are not the only ones that are located with or identified within the plan. But there are some big infrastructure pieces that are already happening within the city. The pedestrian bridge and gateway is an ongoing project that's already within your existing capital facility plans. Those are types of projects that we would actually see as a short-term achievement for this project because you're already planning for it. But generally with the short term, most of these are low-hanging fruit, if you will. Gathering excitement and energy from both businesses and existing residents, people that are coming to Town Center maybe for the first time or who come to Town Center and experience it in one way and not another. So what about, you know, potentially, you know, lunchtime food trucks? To, you know, that could be established tomorrow. Or considering parklet competitions, which is actually a great way to kind of rethink parking to some degree, but even more so to generate excitement among business owners and help, you know, generate, you know, kind of a synergy amongst them for some of the longer-term strategies of actually developing, you know, a business association or something like that for Town Center, which is one of the longer-term recommendations. So these are things that can happen today for generally low cost. Often, the city will be part of this process, but these are also privately driven as well. The city doesn't have to do a parklet competition. That could be through the Chamber of Commerce. It could be through a local business person doing it. But it's really a partnership to achieve those pieces. Some of the longer-term actions, again, the pedestrian bridge and gateway, that's a bridge in many ways between, you know, the different types of projects that you're doing, but also, you know, the amenities that it provides. But from a mid- and long-term standpoint, this is where we start to see Main Street and Park Place start to happen, whether it's changing the design from Park Place to the north or actually considering what that connection looks like to Wilsonville Road to complete that Main Street connection that we've been talking about for a long time. These things are more expensive, and so they take more planning. They take more private investment as well for the adjacent uses. But this is why we see these as happening more as midterm projects. Some of the other pieces, Farmer's Market. We heard a lot from the community about a Farmer's Market within Town Center. While you have space to do that now, it takes an organization to be able to do that, and that takes time to start to develop. And so those are things we see in the next, you know, three to five, six years, because it does take a little bit to get those organized. I will say, though, that just because we identify it as a mid- or a long-term project doesn't mean that it has to take that long. If somebody has the energy and wants to go and do it, that's how stuff happens. And so I would say, don't be stuck with where we put that X in that implementation strategy. Think about who has the energy and the ingenuity to be able to pull some of these things off, because some of these lower-hanging fruit ones, like even the Farmer's Market, could happen sooner rather than later. Same with food carts, semi-permanent or temporary. So I want to talk just briefly, modifications to the plan and the Development Code since the last time we met. Some of these were outcomes from our last meeting that we discussed. Also, we have met with City Council as well. They provided some additional input that we want to make sure that you're aware of as we talk about the plan itself. There was a lot of discussion at the City Council meeting about how the urban forestry plan, which you're talking about at the citywide level, actually applies to Town Center. And so we've added a goal, or excuse me, a strategy within that implementation to make sure that that's organized and coordinated. That's an important piece because trees are a big part of the city, but they're also a big part of Town Center, particularly as you consider walkable urban development. We added a little more discussion about parking structures, not necessarily money or funding, but, you know, some examples from other communities about how they've done that. We've added references to fiber and conduit within streets, which is already something that your Public Works Program is doing. We just wanted to make sure that it was incorporated into this plan, that it's clear as a part of that when you develop new streets. And then we refined the discussion of private versus public construction costs around infrastructure. So who pays for what? What are the assumptions behind that? We added some discussion about that and those implementation measures. And then from the Development Code, it's very similar to what you saw before. Some of the questions around waivers, for example, and we've added more language within the waiver discussion to provide more context. Part of that was from the Planning Commission discussion, but we also talked about that at City Council as well. So we've made some modifications there. One of those pieces is around public art. That was one of the waiver options, you know, providing some type of public art within a plaza space. There was a question about, okay, public art can mean a lot of different things. What does that actually mean? So we've added some language around and guidelines for how that public art can be selected, where it would be located, scale, those types of things to provide more clarity if that were an option that somebody were to choose. I think the two biggest ones that you discussed at Planning Commission and also at City Council was floor plate. And so we have taken your recommendations for the floor plate discussion, and we are permitting more square footage, or excuse me, larger floor plates there as well as one-story buildings, if you can meet the waiver process. And so the waiver process with the floor plate discussion go hand in hand. So they are an option, but there are waivers that you would have to, or criteria within that waiver process that you would have to meet if that were something that somebody wanted to go down that path. And then finally, with drive-throughs, permitting drive-throughs within the mixed-use and CMU zones, provided they meet building standards. And so that includes all of the building standards that are within the proposed Development Code and Design Guidelines. But we've also added from the City Council discussion is that we need to be very clear that all of those facilities are clearly marked so that they avoid pedestrian conflicts, particularly if you have a drive-through in an urban area. It needs to be clearly demarcated so that it's safe for pedestrians around that. Otherwise, all those designs, considerations we've talked about for months would apply to the drive-throughs. So those are the main changes with the code. Fairly minor, considering, you know, the amount of code and design in there. But we wanted to just make sure that it's clear where those changes were made so it's easy for you to see where they were. But with that, as Miranda said, we, from a staff recommendation, are hoping that we can forward a recommendation to City Council for approval of the Town Center Plan, as well as amendments to the Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan and the Development Code. So with that, be happy to answer any questions and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. As you say, we've been at this pretty intensively for the last couple of years, but even before that, the kernel idea has been in the ground since 2014. Even before that, but it has been formally, we pursued this formally since, for four years, not just two. And it's quite exciting to come to this point. I'll entertain comments and questions from the Planning Commission before we open it up to the people. Mr. Springall?
I don't really have any questions. I'm very pleased with the way this has gone and that we've talked in the last couple of work sessions a lot about the floor, the floor plate and the drive-through issues. And I think from what I can tell, that's satisfactory in the plan as it is.
But can you describe for me? You had indicated that the floor plate can be extended through a waiver process. What are we talking about there?
So I'd have to look back at the exact language. I believe the discussion initially was, well, there are two points of discussion. I believe the discussion initially was, well, there are two points of discussion. Should the number of stories be required as a part of the development code? And we had, I think, a clear response from Planning Commission that, yes, we should require two stories for buildings, but there was the question like, what if? What if else something came in? And so that was the initiation for the waiver process for if a one-story building or a building in the commercial mixed-use area were larger, larger than that 50,000 square feet. Are there some design requirements or guidelines that we could put in place to help regulate that, so that you still have that anchor tenant that we've talked a lot about, but not have the pedestrian impacts that a large floor plate or a parking lot, for example, might bring? So the waiver process was that balance to be able to provide some options for that, but not let it just kind of go in.
And what would the waiver criteria be?
So this was the discussion that we had in the January work session where we got the direction to do 30,000 square feet max floor plate in Main Street and neighborhood mixed-use. It could exceed that on multiple floors in the commercial mixed-use and mixed-use area sub-districts. And the waiver to the development standards is outlined in the development code, which is in Attachment A. On page 13 of that is the waiver to the development standards. It would go to the Development Review Board. There was discussion around Planning Commission to make it a menu approach. So what's outlined here is four of the criteria need to be met, and...
Which page are we looking at?
It is page 13 of the... I believe it was provided electronically in a link.
That's where I was looking.
So it's Appendix A. I can go, I can make copies of that.
Let's pull it up.
Kim's got it. So it should be... If you click on 2A. And then if you just go to my attach, yeah, just click on the appendices. And then Appendix A. There should be bookmarks.
Oh, that's right. I added those. Let's see if I can find them.
And so then, yeah. And then we're looking at page 13. So this is the waiver language that was added. So there are 10 different criteria, and the idea was to be, a development proposal would be consistent with four. And the direction that we received was sort of exceeding the building design and architectural standards that we wanted, things that went above and beyond. So there's a couple there around innovative building techniques, around kind of green building, or getting certifications from LEED or Earth Advantage. Building architectural that creates a distinctive community landmark and exemplifies the preferred building materials from the Town Center Plan. Public amenities, so we talked a lot about making sure that public amenities were addressed or community interests. So plazas and gathering spaces that are incorporated into the building design, providing public community space would be another option. Some of the things from the plan that went above and beyond around design and placemaking, like the pedestrian-oriented and creative lighting being incorporated into landscape and plazas, we added. There was, one of the things that we talked a lot about at Planning Commission was the provision of ground-floor facades that include additional supporting storefronts. So you could have a bigger floor plate if you have those additional tenants that are on the front edge of the building. So we added that as one of the options in the menu. We also included the idea of incubator space to help support some of those small businesses, since that was something that continued to be of interest to the community through the planning process. Installation of public art, and then this is where we added provisions to the code around what art and plaza areas would look like, so that there was some level of standard associated with that. And we can go to that section next if you're interested in it. And then another option we provided was if the developer provided affordable housing on the development site, and we just continued with the same definition that we used in Table 2, Footnote 4, which was the definition if they got the building height increase. So someone would, this is kind of a menu approach. They don't have to do all 10 of these things, but would have to go above and beyond in order to get the exception. And that was, we tried to take the direction that we got at the last meeting and reflect that back in these options.
Four items from the menu. Was that the waiver condition that they had to choose four items from this menu?
Four, correct.
Nor do I, really. I already see in the plan as it exists, many reflections of our intensive work sessions we've had on this. I feel that this has been very carefully cultivated, and as far as I can see, full attention has been given to our input from the Commission. Am I missing anything? Shall we go on? Thank you very much. We'll ask you to stay close by because the community has the privilege of asking clarification from you folks, too. Then I have just one card. Are there any others that wish to come forward? I'll call right now on Mr. Garrett Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Greenfield. Members of the Commission, my name is Garrett Stevenson. I'm an attorney with Schwab &amp; Williamson &amp; Wyatt. My address is 1211 Southwest 5th Avenue, Suite 19, Portland, Oregon 97204. I'm here tonight representing the Doris Marjorie Rose Dunn Trust. Behind me are John and Randall Dunn, who are the co-trustees of that trust, and they're the owners of the property where the Sherry's Restaurant is located. And I wanted to talk to you very, very briefly about a few issues with this plan that may or may not be problems for the Sherry's going forward, depending on the development timing. But before I do that, I want to thank Miranda Bechel and Kimberly Rybold for meeting with us for an entire hour right before the hearing, which is never easy to do when you're trying to get ready for a public hearing. So I do appreciate that, and they were very informative, talked us through some of our concerns. So you have a letter that we submitted into the record. I'm not going to talk about it during my oral presentation tonight. I encourage you to take a look at it. But I think in really digging deeper into the plan, for us, the biggest issue is the transportation improvements that have been proposed. As some of you may or may not know, when you have an asset like a Sherry's or any other restaurant of that type, access and visibility are the two main things that that business needs to survive and thrive. And the plan itself, and I want to say as a caveat, I think that the urban development concept for this area is a laudable one and a good one, and we don't have any problems with the plan as a general matter. What we want to talk about are two granular issues with the transportation elements of that plan, how it might affect the Sherry's Restaurant. Right now, the Sherry's Restaurant benefits from the ability to turn left onto Town Center Loop West from Wilsonville Road, and of course, turn left out of Town Center Loop West back onto Wilsonville Road. One of the things that is proposed to be changed, and frankly, I don't know whether there's much that can be done about it, given the complexities of signal timing and the fact that you have to share some jurisdictional control with ODOT in your interchange area management plan. But obviously, you can imagine with the Sherry sitting up there, losing that left-turn movement could be a big deal. But when you add to that the proposal to cut off vehicular access on Park Place as part of the promenade project, and that, I'll just give you the reference for that, that's noted as Project IN-10. When you add those two things together, you end up with a somewhat problematic mix in terms of the exposure of that restaurant and the ability of people to get to it. So all that being said, the timing, as we mentioned to Miranda, the timing here could be the savior or could be the downfall for us. If the timing of those improvements is far enough out to where it gets past the economic life of that building, which is, you know, it's a number of years off, but it's not 20 or 30 years off. If the timing of those improvements is past that point, it's probably not too big of a concern. But if these improvements are made soon, especially looking to renegotiate a new lease with the Sherry's tenant, we would offer two recommendations that we would like to explore, would like this Commission to consider, and also for staff to consider. Number one is to look at preserving some level of vehicular access on the portion of Park Place that runs right by, I guess it would be the east side of Sherry's. And the Sherry's Restaurant is kind of located at the point where you have Park Place, and I'm sorry, I don't have the image up here, but if you have Park Place here and you have Town Center Loop here, the Sherry's is right there. And so we want to make sure that once those left-turn movements from Wilsonville Road are eliminated, people can easily go up the, I guess it's Wilsonville, or excuse me, it's going to be Town Center Loop South, that they can turn onto Town Center Loop South and without too much trouble, find the Sherry's and get there. And so part of that is maintaining some level of, thank you, maintaining some level of, if I can show it here, some level of access on this street here. And we understand that's going to be a promenade concept, and I think that from an aesthetic standpoint, that's a great idea. However, with the signalization that will prevent left turns here, people are going to be forced to turn in here and then attempt to get through one of these side streets to our location here. At this point, the most direct way to achieve that is to allow people to still turn directly down and head right for the restaurant. So the two things I wanted to suggest is, number one, look at preserving some level of vehicular access here. And it's a forward-thinking plan because it looks like there's already a concept in the plan that would provide this, and that is the local street concept, Option 3, and that's on the DKS Exhibit D, which shows you the profiles of some of the different local street concepts. And this is called, it basically allows a mix of pedestrian and automobile traffic there. And I've seen this done in a number of other jurisdictions. I think it's a great way to go. It does allow some level of vehicular access, but at such a low speed that folks are able to continue to walk and ride their bikes without too much concern about conflicts with automobiles. But the second point I would like to make is that if, for some reason, that option is not pursued, what we would like to do is explore with the city the possibility of phasing the improvements in over time so that the build-out of this promenade and its closure to vehicular traffic is not done completely until the economic life of that Sherry's Restaurant is through. And we could do this in a number of ways. It could be through a development agreement or some other contractual mechanism with the city that would allow us to keep at least some level of vehicular access there. So those are really the only two things I wanted to point out tonight. You have my letter, but really, when we distilled it down and after speaking with city staff, who frankly were very, very helpful, I think that these are really the only two main concerns we have at this point. I understand there's some transportation planning yet to be done, but we wanted to get this on record and place it before you tonight to consider as you make your decision. So with that, I will leave myself open to any questions, but thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anything?
So this is probably a question for staff. The promenade, Park Place Promenade redesign, and also the Town Center Loop West modifications, they show up in the implementation matrix we talked about on page 110 out of 233. They are numbers IN.8 and IN.10. So, but they show up as medium and long-term, not short-term.
That is correct.
So I kind of think like we're actually already along the lines of what's being asked for here, because...
That is correct.
Immediate, right?
That is correct, and those changes, particularly for IN-10, have to occur after other investments in the Town Center occur, particularly the extension of Main Street to Wilsonville Road, or extension of Parkway to Wilsonville Road. And I would also mention that in the description for IN-10, we actually do reference the design would be similar to the Wooner-style local street cross-section, which is in Appendix D, the one that was referenced. And there's a lot of design. It talks about the fact that design still needs to be worked on, and that depending on the final design, vehicle charging, car share, bus stops should be, could be incorporated. So we are referencing that Wooner-style. We do, there was some limitations on the vehicular access in terms of the main routing, but that is something that is touched upon in here, and that design is the one that's listed as the preferred design. So it is something that we can, it kind of leaves it open to us to continue to have that conversation moving forward.
Right, so Park Place may well actually have some limited vehicular access.
That is the idea, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, nobody has any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I have Rebecca Small, representing Metro.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Rebecca Small. I am a regional planner with Metro Regional Planning Agency. Our address is 600 Northeast Grand Avenue in Portland, Oregon 97232. I'll try to keep my comments brief, which for government officials should be no more than two, three hours. But I will try to be brief because I'm sure that, as you can see for yourself, this is an exceptional plan, one that will serve your community for decades. The best plans give a city something to be excited about. So a plan that began with a community block party was off to a good start from the beginning. But your staff have put together a project with the public stakeholders and with the public at large, a 20-year plan that we can't wait to see happen. From Metro's perspective, as a regional land use planning agency, we are particularly interested to see the transformation of this area from a more spread-out, commercial area with some underutilized spaces into a walkable, vibrant space that brings people together, supports the local business community, and that many people will call home. The goals of this plan are consistent with Metro's functional plan, and they support the 2040 growth concept of active centers that bring jobs, homes, green spaces, together in areas that are walkable and support active transportation. As a grantee for this project, or grantor for this project, we are pleased and impressed with where Wilsonville has taken this work, and we look forward to working with you again on future grants. Finally, I would like to commend the planning staff on what was truly an exceptional public engagement plan. It was extensive, it was creative, it was thoughtful, and with a word that I don't use too much in long-range planning, I would say it was fun. It's actually fun. It's... It brought youth and families together into the planning process, people that absolutely should be involved in long-range plans, they're the people that are going to benefit from them the most. But they are often the people that are thought of last in these projects. And this team went out into the schools, brought families together, coordinated events specifically to bring families and young people together into this planning process, which is so appropriate. As this gets built out, they'll be the ones that are going to get to go to these farmers' markets and are going to go for runs around the green spaces in this town center. We particularly appreciate the special attention to bilingual engagement and the specific efforts that this team made to connect with the Spanish-speaking members of your community. I think you can be confident that this plan represents a shared vision that came from the people that it will serve. I'll just close by letting you know that we plan to steal your planning staff for an afternoon to present to the regional government and other cities in our region so that they can discuss how they conducted this community engagement process, so that other grant projects that we, other grant projects that we are overseeing can learn from a very good example. And I am available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I think that will do it for us. Does anyone else wish to speak? I think this is a very exciting, this is a very exciting point, inflection point in Wilsonville's history. It's one that I think probably has been anticipated from the very earliest planning stages back in the 1970s even. The image of Town Center that was originally envisioned has certainly changed from that original vision, although many aspects of it are still evident in the map as we have it today. But we're now at a point in the maturing of this community where we can think into the next half-century and what we want our town to look like going on that distance. It no doubt is, in some ways, more fun to start where the city was in 1969 with empty, not empty, but non-urbanized fields and farms in the area, which are available for initial urban development. That's certainly not the case today. We have a vibrant, well-established town, city with residents and businesses in the area that we're now looking at to redevelop. It must be of some concern to some to look at a map and see what changes there are that would affect them personally. But I would point out on page, early on in the plan's statement here on page four, "New development in Town Center will not happen immediately or all at once. Instead, when a landowner wants to redevelop, the Town Center Plan will guide how the city developers, landowners, and businesses can support the community's vision for the Town Center." I would go on to say that, consistent with the way that Wilsonville always has done its business and is very much committed to now, we make no decisions which are not sensitive to their impacts on existing properties, owners, and citizens. We have a process for seeking community input at each step, and that will continue on through the more refined, fine-grained planning steps that are coming ahead. That said, I'm confident that we will be forwarding to the City Council a resolution endorsing this project. I'm jumping ahead because I haven't gotten the consent from the members of the commission, but we'll have a discussion after we hear a motion to adopt this resolution.
Chair Greenfield, can you close the public hearing, please?
I'm reminded once again of the procedure. Before the commission can have this stage of discussion, we will formally close input from the public. One last call, if anyone wishes to ask a question of the commission or of our consultants, this is the time. Hearing none. The hearing is closed at 6:59. Now, do we have a motion?
I'm still lingering with a question, that's why I'm not jumping out there. And that question is, I guess I'm still a little bit confused how we got from the floor plate discussion where we were at to, I mean, I think the list that we see of waiver criteria is probably not what I was expecting to see, and I think I'm curious to hear from others whether or not it is what they expected to see.
Is this something that you want input from?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, it is. But I think I'm somewhat curious as to whether or not I'm the only commissioner that has that inquiry as well. Like I said before, I mean, I think, I guess I'm not opposed to having a waiver criteria so much as I'm looking at this list and I'm wondering how, if part of the discussion was the possibility for anchor tenancy inside there, at least the opportunity for it, whether or not this may be burdensome for that to happen or not. And I think what I'm struggling to wrap my head around is some of these things about public amenities and public spaces within those, and I'm curious about examples as to where that works, you know, what might qualify for those sorts of things, because otherwise, this is kind of a difficult list. I mean, we only need four out of 10, but it's still a list that might be a little bit difficult to tick off four of those off of the list unless we're doing something like that public-space-wise. I think that's the question that I have for you, is what does that look like? What do we think fulfills these, some of those types of waiver requirements?
Okay, so, I'll buy it to that. I think I have some semblance of agreement with you. These are big items. For example, in the Frog Pond Plan, which was residential, sure, we had very specific things in the menu that they could choose from. They could have a certain kind of fascia, they could have lamps, they could have, it was very detailed, objective items. These are much more subjective, and it would be challenging in some cases to imagine yourself as a DRB board member, when reviewing a plan with a waiver application, to see how a specific application might meet one of these criteria. Because they may be necessarily large and broad, the public amenities, the community meeting space, but they are different enough that I think it's a good question that we should explore ways to make this easier to judge in the quasi-judicial format of the DRB.
Do you have any input for us on what some of these criteria look like? I mean, some of them are pretty obvious, right? I mean, public arts and lead standards and the like, but some of these other ones are a little bit, I'm not sure how to wrap my head around them. Maybe you can help us out with that.
Sure, I'll jump in first. Kim Rybold, Associate Planner with the city. So I think a lot of these ideas we took as a starting point. I know Alex, when, he wasn't at the last meeting, but he went and listened to the recording, and we tried to list out what it was that we heard from the group. So I know a public meeting space was something that was thrown out at some point. So what we did, I think Alex took the first cut at assembling this list and putting it in the code. Miranda and I then sat down with our senior planner, Dan O'Polly, who, he really has a good eye for kind of that clear and objective standard. So we tried to comb through some of the language, and I do think, I see your point that a lot of these things are, you could really specify, you know, what size of community meeting space. That wasn't something, you know, we really got into the detail other than the provision of that space, because I think some of that is going to be dependent on what the use is, you know, what. You know, I think an obvious example of storefront type of putting in a storefront is like a Starbucks that's in the Fred Meyer, where you have, it looks like a separate entrance, it's sort of tied into the store, but it's a separate storefront. So I think that was kind of one of the ideas we had there. I think we did hear some discussion about building architecture, that is one that we actually struggled with a little bit in terms of how to kind of bring forward the idea that you must provide something distinctive to the area without, you know, really saying, you know, high-quality architecture, because that is more difficult to define. So we did try to tie in the materials because we do have those listed within the plan. There is a specific list of things that we would like to consider. So, I think certainly these are, some of these are bigger ideas. I think we'd be open to suggestions if, you know, there are ways that you want to narrow them more. I think the bigger concept was, what can we provide or what is acceptable for us to look at in exchange for granting a waiver to something that otherwise wouldn't be allowed? And I think we heard, we felt like we heard clearly from the commission that we wanted, you know, something really had to demonstrate the ability to provide something unique to the community, and so I think that's what we were trying to get at here.
And I thought we heard both items around like architecture and design, and so we tried to tie in some of the concepts that are in the placemaking section that are around that as well, that are the design of kind of the public space that would be adjacent or a part of the overall site development, like the lighting concepts. And then, I thought I had also heard a couple ideas thrown out about community benefits, both in terms of like community space, but then things like affordable housing or incubator space is kind of more on that community benefit side. So we did try to incorporate those as options, but we are open to modifying those. We're also open to modifying the number that must be met. I mean, there's nothing magical about four. So, that is another opportunity that we'd appreciate your input on.
I think what jams me up on it a little bit is still item number three and number four, which is, I think I'm struggling to read that language and know what it's saying fits that criteria. You know, and I don't think it comes down to size in my mind, I think it's a, what use are we talking about? Public plaza, does that mean it's for, you know, it's, you know, does it need to be tied to restaurant usage? Or, I mean, I guess that's probably where it would land, but public community meeting space, interior, you know, again, is that, you know, is that seating inside for, you know, I think what I wonder in my mind is, the Whole Foods over by REI, for instance, has, you know, restaurant space interior, is that what we're talking about? Or is it something different? I just, I don't know. I'm struggling to wrap my head around that. And if I can get there, maybe I can be okay with this language, I just don't know what we're aiming for here.
I think that, certainly we could try to add some specifics to that. I think with some of these, they are intentionally a little looser primarily because, like for example, if you're talking about an interior space, you know, what percentage of size of a building that we don't know would that be? I think that it's, I think it's important to keep in mind, you know, these are, you're asking for a variance from what the plan itself is requesting, and so from a lift standpoint, there should be a public benefit out of that in some fashion for getting this waiver process. So it is a heavier lift if there's a request for that, which is why some of these, this list, this menu of items are a little stronger, for example. But I think from a, like a public community meeting space, we heard from the public that, you know, places to gather, whether it's internal or external are important. They're also, with the exception of the library or others, very hard to come by. And so there are examples of buildings providing that type of space. And actually, the Whole Foods is a good example, because they do have some community spaces that they use for either classes or their events there as well. So, it's not specific in terms of square footage, but we certainly be open to thinking about ideas for how that might function.
I don't think that's what I'm after. I think it runs the danger of both being too vague and too specific at the same time. I don't have a problem with having actual waiver criteria so much as, if not clear on what we're trying to get. And again, like I said, I mean, this language may be sufficient in my mind, but I guess I'm, and maybe that's a question for the rest of the commissioners here, as to what is it we would hope to see in something like that, so that we can see whether this language matches what we want to see.
Sure.
Operating there instead. Because again, like you said, I mean, classes, for instance, that's different than the Fred Meyers over here that has a Starbucks with a large seating area, you know what I'm saying? That's different. So which is it that we're looking for? And if I think if I, I think if I can have an idea of that's what we're looking for, I might feel more comfortable with the vagueness that we have here, not to mention the fact that we've just plain made a record that says kind of what we think that those things are. Maybe that's going to be sufficient. But I'm looking to know from other people what they want to see.
When the DRB gets a request for a waiver, what exactly is the DRB granting the waiver from? That is to say, are the specifications clear enough that the DRB can exercise a quasi-judicial function in granting a waiver to them? I actually don't see that yet, but we're at a very preliminary stage of coding for this whole development. At some point, the code will become much more specific, I'm sure, and the DRB will have a very specific criteria to use in evaluating applications. Those don't exist yet. What I would see as the, a distinction that needs to be made at this point is that the waivers or the additional criteria that are given here are ones that do not specifically address the commercial or primary use of the facility, but are ancillary or additional functions of the property, some of them public, some of them community-oriented, and therefore outside of the direct business interests of that property. And so it should allow the property to be larger than we're envisioning in order to accommodate those functions without reducing the potential of the property to generate So, a restaurant, or a community, let's say a community gathering place, should a business provide for that, might very well be justified as additional square footage, which would seem to me to be very much an advantage to the development and justify a waiver of the square footage requirement, preserving both the ability of the property to generate the business and not to preclude the additional benefits that they're requesting, benefits to the community that are being requested. So, I agree, I share the unease about not having clear and objective standards here, but at the same time, I think that the understanding of the plan and its objectives, its general vision are determinative for future Development Review Board review, and are the basis for seeking a waiver. I have no problem. The problem here really is whether we need, whether there should be clear enough, more clear and objective standards than we have at this point specified. I really, I hate to raise the issue, because I've objected in the past to being tied too closely to clear and objective standards in other regards, tying our hands and limiting our ability to exercise a more flexible judgment. As a member of the, as a past member of Development Review Board... As a member of the DR, as a past member of the Development Review Board, it's uncomfortable if there aren't clear and objective standards. But as a member of the community and looking at it from a planner's point of view, if there's not some room for flexibility in, in achieving the vision that we're laying out, if it's all cut and dried, we're going to have a cut and dried community. I don't want a cut and dried community.
So Chair, I'd like to thank Commissioner Postman for bringing this back around for us to take a look at. As I look at these, and I think about if I, if somebody were to come before us as a DRB, and just even you look at number one, and you, the whole point is that to gain your floor area, you, the city is basically saying, do something extra for us. It's the whole, it's a quid pro quo, right? So, but there's a price tag to every one of these things. And if the developer were to completely build out option number one, innovative building techniques, you know, so maybe it's, it's a completely wood building, it's going to cost you, you know, however many percent more, rainwater harvesting, gray water systems, green roofs, along with the environmental systems, it ends up being a LEED certification building. Right there, you know, let's just say they add 30% to the cost of the building by doing that, but it's not four things.
And it doesn't add floor area.
So you have to have clear and objective standards to it.
Well, exactly, because we're talking about waiver here. I, I completely understand your point when we're speaking about, we want to leave some flexibility for design professionals to run with a project and create a design, but a waiver doesn't fulfill that purpose in my mind. It is a, like Commissioner Hurley said, a quid pro quo of sorts, which is, if, if you want this larger footprint, you need to provide these additional amenities. And if we're too vague on what those amenities are, then we're leaving DRB unsure what to, what to approve or not to approve. But it doesn't really change that whole flexibility notion of design, so that we're avoiding cookie cutter type of projects. So, and, and again, I, I'll say it again, I don't know that this doesn't fulfill that requirement in my mind, but since I don't know what we're trying to create here, I, I can't, you know, can't take my lawyer's brain and try to turn this into something as, does this look objective enough for it to be, to fulfill the requirements here that we're trying to provide for a waiver?
So I see two, maybe three categories of items here. There's, there's environmental benefit, the innovative building techniques, there's a primarily environmental benefit items. I think that, that was the intent of point one. And point six goes with that, the LEED certification, that, as you mentioned, those could really be the same thing. And one builder may get, you know, two points for this, for one particular piece of effort there, which may not be a bad thing. I think four, four items of this scale may be actually a pretty big ask. And despite, you know, but actually supporting all of these ideas, they all say unlike great ideas, requiring a particular developer meet four of these may be a little bit too much, because they are quite substantial in, or they can be quite substantial. And I'm not disagreeing with Commissioner Postman here. There's, 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 there's meeting spaces, there's meeting space enough that may be a coffee table, or it may be, it may be a room that can seat 40 people. I'm not, I'm not sure which of those. I'm, I'm imagining, oh, great, we're going to have more rooms seating 40 people, and we can have, we can have meetings there. Well, that's not necessarily the case when you, when you read this. So I'm, I'm optimistic that it's, we're not really talking about a coffee table, but it doesn't really preclude that.
So I think, I think the challenge with that would be to, you could, you could add a square footage minimum to that. That's also one, I think, from what I've heard from the planning commission, that that's, that feels like the most nebulous of, of many of these. And, you know, the, I think these waivers are, you know, we don't need 10 waiver criteria or 10 numbers of waiver. We can remove ones that you feel are, are too subjective, you know, because we have clear, we have, we have clear and objective standards in that, you know, that's outside this waiver process. Those, those are clear and objective standards, and as we get into this, that they do become more subjective. And Kim, you were.
I'll jump in as well. I've been reflecting back on our, the current waiver process we have and thinking about how that relates to this. And, you know, for better or for worse, I actually feel like when we have requests for waivers now, the criteria is much more nebulous in terms of, you know, essentially right now, the code section says we are better implementing the purposes and objectives of site, the site design review criteria, which those, some of those are really kind of big ideas. And so essentially, what we tell an applicant when that happens is, if you're requesting a waiver, you know, you have to demonstrate and explain why this is, you know, resulting in a better site design or better function. I mean, that's essentially what it boils down to. And, you know, when we're writing staff report, we're, we're essentially saying, this is what the applicant says they want to do and why, and it's up to them to really justify it. In a way, you know, when we look at it, a waiver is sort of an exception to what is otherwise a clear and objective standard. So I feel like, you know, in thinking about that and how we typically approach waivers, I think we're, we're trying to be a little more surgical here, because we're identifying these waivers for very specific reasons, which are floor plates and building height. And so, you know, I think some of these, while, you know, we might not be able to get to that dimensional standard that is so clear and objective, you know, if there are things, you know, maybe four is too many. But I think what we've tried to capture is, what are we getting in return? It's that, how, how is this functioning better? How is this adding value to the project? And in the bigger picture, how is this adding value to town center? So I think maybe if we kind of think about this list of criteria in a way that, you know, what is going to add the most value to us when we're evaluating a project, while, you know, hopefully being clear enough in the criteria that we want to include here that it gives the DRB something to make a decision on, that they can look at a proposal that an applicant has to defend and say, yes, we agree, this makes this better and this is acceptable. So I think, you know, like Miranda said, we're open to suggestions. I think a menu approach is providing more direction than what we currently provide for waivers. But, you know, what, you know, really in essence, I think we're trying to ask ourselves what we want to get out of it.
I know Commissioner Hurley asked, asked a question, but can you scroll down so we can see those last three?
Sure. I know it's hard that they're not, I can't get them really well altogether. I've been trying. Let's see. Subtle nudge.
It's been literally multiple decades since I last looked at.
It can't happen. Just give us the list. Go up a little bit.
Yeah, I could zoom out a little more.
To where, to where you can increase your far, right? So, and it has to, and it was literally, sorry, sorry, but it was 30 years ago that I last looked at something like this or worked on something like this. But it was pretty simple. It's basic, it was, it was, think of it as a price, because that's what it is, right? You know, we're saying you can't go above this height, right? But if you're willing to pay the price, you can add two more floors to your building, okay? And basically, that's what we're doing in various, that was what I was familiar with. But that's in, in different ways what we're saying here. And I think that effectively, we should have, you know, you do X, X equals X, Y number of feet that you can add. You do Z, you can, it will equal A in terms of height or square feet. And, you know, X might have three options to it. You know, Z might have three options to it. But, you know, because otherwise, I can, you know, based on this, I could come in with, you know, eight blue water recycling barrels, you know, at, at $800 at market cost, put in some, you know, coffee tables out front, and, you know, you see where I'm going, and say that the, the lunchroom upstairs could also be used if you called ahead, we'd let you use that as a community meeting space. You see, you can go both ways on it, and you can either scrimp on it and, and play the system. And Wilsonville really doesn't get anything from it. But if you go with the clear and objective standards, that these things equal this number of square feet maximum added. These things equal this number of, you know, this many stories maximum.
That to me, I, it's very helpful. That picture is very helpful that you're drawing there. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, that's, and like I said, that's 30 years old planning stuff. I haven't been in that field for that long, but that's the way it was in terms of, you want to add height to your building that says that it can't be more than 150 feet, we'll give you 160 feet, you know, or 170 feet if you do this and this, plain and simple. So.
That is the typical way of dealing with housing height. And you're creating a cost in your planning by saying, we're going to limit the density or the height, because we know developers want more. And in order to get more, then they have to give us affordable housing or whatever. The approach that I think makes more sense in the town center is not that dissimilar, but it's not price, it's cost. Cost and benefit, in that with a big plate, what we are sacrificing is the walkability and the coziness. So that's the cost. The benefit should negate that somehow. So a, depending on how big this plate is, and I was looking Broadway Coffee in Salem, they have 3,000 square feet of public space. There's a coffee shop in the corner, but two floors of seating and meeting areas, very comfortable and so forth, is part of that whole high-rise development. And the rest of the office building is, is locked off. So, you know, if you're sitting in the coffee shop or meeting in the coffee shop, you can't go up without having the access code or invitation. So that's truly public. And in that case, it's created a hub for the neighborhood for gathering. So this is not that kind of a neighborhood that we're dealing with. We're dealing with a town center that has a list that the task force started with what we want this to feel like, function like, look like. That to me should be the criteria. If you are doing something that takes away from that list of what we are looking for, then tell us what you're bringing in that compensates for, for what you're taking away. So it's a cost-benefit approach, but unfortunately, it's not $500 here, so give me $500 worth of development or affordable housing. It's, you took away from the coziness, what are you providing that creates a cozy gathering environment for the public in this space? So to Commissioner Postman's statement, no, this is not just a coffee shop that has 10 more seats. It is truly a public space that encourages gathering and community kind of associative kinds of functions. So how do we, how do we word that, is the question?
Well, I'm wondering, as I look at this list, and maybe as a proposed solution, you look at item number three, four, and seven, right? And that kind of speaks to what you're talking about. If you're going to take away some of the cozy, these are some of the things that you can compensate back, that maybe kind of reinstitute that cozy again. I'm kind of stealing your language there, because I kind of like how that works, right? The other ones are more kind of building, you know, we, we want these things, you know, we, we need some innovative design techniques, or distinctive architectural feature, or art, right? A different category right there. And then we've got those two little outliers of affordable housing, or some sort of incubator or small business type of space. And it almost seems like, okay, work within those categories. Instead of providing us four amongst this list of 10, let's work amongst those categories instead, makes me feel a little bit more comfortable perhaps. Because, you know, if, if we're saying that you need to provide interior space for a community purpose, but also meet LEED standards, maybe with a green roof and the like, that's going to start getting, Commissioner Springall said, that might be a pretty big ask, because you're increasing a footprint on something that gets, you know, those sorts of things are pretty expensive. But I, I like what you're saying, which is, is that if you're taking away from the feel, let's get some of that feel back, and how do we do that? And I think some of the architectural pieces can do that, but I guess in my mind, those are distinctive from the other ones that are still trying to return that feel that you're talking about.
Well, I zero in on the cozy, because that was one of the, or the, what, what was the wording we used? We used, it should be a center of community gathering, or whatever it was.
And the hub and the heart of Wilsonville.
Hub and the heart. So that was just one of the original goals that the task force came up with. The other one was, this place needs to be attractive and bring people in. So iconic comes to mind. This business of, of a distinctive architectural design, I would have said iconic architectural approach, not just using whatever higher materials are being used elsewhere, but I want to see an Eiffel Tower.
We had that conversation.
Really, people come here, it could be just a, a piece of artwork that is, the Centennial Park in Chicago has a big, the whole park is, is different environmental art. But one of them is a block of, it's a, a cube made out of glass blocks with neon art inside. So it, it, it has all kinds of different colors and different patterns coming on and off with music. So something like that in a smaller scale would attract. It's, you know, it's just an iconic art piece that will attract people just to come and sit around it. So that would compensate, to me, having lost that character of the space. If we put a huge box in there, three times the size of our maximum kind of plate size, well, have a public plaza that has something like that and a large enough area for people to gather and, and have communal togetherness as part of your development, and it becomes iconic, and it brings a sense of place to the, to the town center. So sense of place is another one of those things that we came up with. The affordable housing and so forth, if I remember correctly, was one of the things that came up in our discussions early on as well, in that we are asking for residential development here, because we want people to own this space or part of it. We don't want it to become deserted in the middle of the night. Part of that goes to, well, we're gentrifying the place. You're only going to have very high kind of cost housing available here that not everybody can afford. So part of this has to do with how do we bring in affordable units as part of that overall residential development? So these are all pieces, I just went with the cozy, because that was.
No, I didn't, I just went with it because I liked it. Let me throw out a proposal, bear with me a minute here. I, I would think it fits more my vision, and I think a little bit of what you're saying, if we say, rather than say, give us four things off this list, we say, we need you to do one of item three, four, or seven, right? That gets you back to that cozy, public amenity kind of thing. Or in the alternative, to do either eight or 10, because then it provides this either lower-cost business opportunity or affordable housing in its place. Do one of those two things, and then also incorporate perhaps one of the other ones that are more design-oriented, right? Innovative building techniques, public art, you know, because then we can kind of get back in, like you said. We want some public space back and/or a trade-off for affordable housing or affordable business space. And then on top of that, we want some good design, so follow, use one of these things as well.
We could do that. My preference, and this goes back to how I used to deal with issues like this, is to have staff analyze the adverse impacts of what is being proposed, and then that should tell you what your, your.
What your compensation.
Yes. Because, you know, if, if your proposal isn't really having adverse environmental impacts, you know, what.
Yeah. Yeah.
Fine, you're doing environmental things, but really what you're hurting is traffic or some other thing. So address what your adverse impact is as opposed to just what you, in a list, randomly pick.
Isn't the adverse impact here size?
Size could have environmental adverse impacts, it could have traffic adverse impacts, it could have visual or architectural adverse impacts, massing impacts, urban design.
Yeah, community.
Place, all of these could be impacted by size.
And is, aren't we compensating by that by making some of that large space, public space instead? Right, and then I forgot.
All I was saying is depending on what the proposal is, the adverse impact could tell you or direct you at least better to which one of these is best at addressing what is getting wrecked as a result of the proposal. That's where I was going.
And isn't, and kind of the flip side to that though, or in conjunction with that, it's, so how much out of the norm are they, you know, how much more are they asking for? So, you know, we can't ask for this if all they want is this, right? So what's the, what's the proportionality to it to make sure?
Yes.
But we already have a maximum on the size, right?
Yes.
And size is the impact.
Yeah, I mean, that's the.
Isn't that what we're talking about here?
Well, there's an existing size limitation and what's behind this waiver is for them to be able to ask to exceed that.
And it's, but it's multi-story. You can exceed it, but it needs to be multi-story, correct?
But exceed by like what percentage?
No, not in the waivers. So when we start to apply the waivers, so existing, you can exceed 30,000 square feet on multiple stories in commercial mixed use and mixed use. And what these waivers were intended to, based on last conversation, was there might be an instance where we want to exceed that 30, maybe it's 40, and it's 40 on the bottom and on a second story, or maybe it's just 40 on a single story. We want it to be, we want to have some flexibility to provide that through a waiver process in case it's a good anchor that we want to get and they offer some type of community benefit. So this is to get at that they can get an exception to the number of floors and to the floor plate size.
So we're back off of not really having a maximum per se there then? Okay.
If they go through the waiver process, which is why there's these additional.
Right.
Requirements or options.
So what Peter and I, I thought we agreed on was, was the size beyond the maximum.
Okay.
So the size of impact and the scope of impact, if you wish.
So how do we implement that? And the style of impact you were talking about.
I'm on board. How do we implement that?
And what is the metric of exchange?
Right. That's my question.
The metric of exchange is always the impact, the level of impact.
And how is that clear and objective?
So one, one staff analyzes it, it's so much more traffic, it's so much more stormwater discharge. No, the impact from a bigger roof is very clear.
Yeah.
No, you can calculate how much stormwater is running off of it. So yes, you can have an environmental approach for capturing that additional water and doing something with it that negates the adverse impact of it as a way of addressing it. With traffic, the same way, how are you going to address that? With massing and design, that becomes more difficult because it's aesthetic and those kinds of things. So how do you make it look not as horrendous? And some of the stuff we're talking about is breaking it up, creating spaces that allows for visually segmenting a large block into smaller kinds of spaces that are personalizable. These are not just spaces that are no man's lands.
I think I'm hearing that and seeing that there's categories that these 10 items or may be grouped into, you know, the public space, the environmental mitigation, the public service or business service through the incubator site and the housing service. So depending, if we go with this idea of depending on the style of impact this particular development would have, then we're able to, by regrouping these items here, we're able to provide a menu of, it's still a menu, a menu of possible things that in each of those categories that may be necessary to be waived. There's still a waiver process. I think it's more targeted to, what you're suggesting is it should be something more targeted to that particular application, a measure up with scale as well as style or whatever, you know, dimension, the way in which it's exceeding the code.
Yes.
The style of waiver, if it's environmental or if it's due to massing and community impact.
And I'm counting on staff's ability to be able to analyze those impacts and provide some measure of qualifying and quantifying it. Now, having said all of this, I fully depend on Commissioner Postma to tell us how to do it because he's going to be poking holes as a lawyer when this comes to court.
Not this plan, not this plan. You were talking over there. Did you have any brilliant ideas?
We were strategizing a little bit.
So I think what's challenging is that proportionally, the degree of impact, the impact on or how these criteria mitigate those impacts are not going to be measured the same way. So one criteria might have more of a mitigating effect than something else. And I don't know necessarily how you measure that or to what factor. That's what we're trying to think through. So in the stormwater example, you have an increased floor plate, so you're going to have to do more stormwater impacts. Well, that's no different than what our standards would already require you to do anyway. So to me, that's difficult to call that a waiver criteria because that's kind of a freebie, you know? So I think I'm just, we're kind of trying to cycle through, you know, is there kind of a proportionate, you know, if you're X percent over this, does that trigger additional things? But yeah, I'm thinking about how they're weighted is what I'm struggling with right now.
And I would add to that, that particularly related to the ones that are, I think, more on the social side of like affordable housing and affordable business space, those are very difficult to measure on an individual project basis. It's kind of the improvements that are overall in a town center and the rents going up that are attributable to every development that would, that kind of were the reasons for some of those benefits. So I just wanted to say that I think in terms of proportionality and measurement, it'd be very difficult to measure a project to that. And so this brings me back to the coziness and that maybe that is actually the focus of this section of the criteria because that's something that is actually linked back to the original issue, which is size, scale, and what that does to the visual environment.
That's what I was going to say, and that's where I'm going to go circle back to my idea from before and advocate for it again. Here's why. Because I think what we're saying is, is if you're going to build so big, one thing we know you need to do is you need to add that coziness back, right? But I'm actually willing to trade that off if you're going to either do affordable housing or affordable business space, you know, one of those two incubator approaches, right? That's why I say, you know, we've got the cozy criteria, which are three, four, and seven, right? Add that back in there because you're going to be big. We want that coziness back. Or the other trade-off is, is you're going to give us some affordable uses. Then what we want you to do on top of that is we need you to take from this list, you need some mitigating factor, you need some sort of mitigating construction technique in order to deal with the size as well, right? That's where we can come in with the innovative building techniques like green roofs to deal with, you know, large hardscape that with nowhere for water to go and the like, right? Maybe we can do both of those by just saying, in order, we need you to implement some of these things here below in order to mitigate the impact of the size that you are building. We don't have to completely go, say, you must analyze it. We're asking the designer to come and say, what are you throwing off? And let's mitigate that. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
We can kind of go back to where I was saying before. It's one, add cozy or affordable. And then we want some design standards that fix the fact that you're getting big.
That works for me. The only concern I have is pushing go affordable or cozy all the way to the end creates public housing that are so impersonal because they don't have any coziness that it just fails. So cozy and affordability actually need to be integrated.
I got you.
As opposed to separated.
And, okay, well then.
And if we're looping back to, you know, in terms of, what's our term for, what's the phrasing that we're using for our neighborhood place? No, not that one. That one's the new.
Maybe we just put cozy in the definitions and call it good.
Give us a cozy design.
Again, not that it's necessarily an easy out, but, you know, you put on X floor, you're affordable housing up at the top, but then you still end up having a three-block-long wall that is just barren. My two cents at this point is that, you know, unless it's at an alternate location in the sense that it's in a housing area, you know, it's a separate housing building that is affordable housing, that the design elements of this oversized building, quasi-oversized, you know, would need to still meet the coziness.
So if I'm under, just make sure I understand, as we try to update this section. So there are, as I understand it, there's buckets essentially of, there's the cozy bucket, there's the environmental and design bucket, and then there's the other bucket.
Affordable bucket.
Affordable bucket or something like that. You know, we could say, we could organize those and rather than say in general that four of these have to be met, that you have to meet one from each of them. So that could, so then you get that cozy quality, but then you also get the improved architectural or environmental design and providing you a little more clarity with what that means, I think, for some of those. And then you'd have, you know, one of the others, which maybe is a little bit more flexibility. I think I'm trying to figure out, like as Kim said, there's a lot of different scales to these and it should be a benefit if they're asking for the waiver process. And so how do you get, maintain what you're, what we had in the plan, but get a little bit, you know, get some benefit out of it because of the waiver.
To me, the affordability can be just a goal that the city sets. It doesn't need to be, you know, it could be even a fees in lieu of that gets collected and builds, as Commissioner Hurley was saying, its own architecturally designed housing unit when the funds are all gathered. But that doesn't need to be an impact, addressing an impact. It could be just a goal for the city center to have this many affordable housing and this many innovation hub kind of commercial units based on its size, based on the mix, whatever. And all of these variances are just contributing fees in lieu of to that fund so that the city can pull it off. I'm fine with that.
So in terms of buckets, I think what I heard from you before was that the cozy and the affordable are kind of one or the other. And just me thinking about it, I would caution against making that three different buckets just because I do feel like the affordable aspects might be more challenging to a developer. So maybe it's affordable or a fee in lieu of is a good suggestion, you know, contributing, essentially providing a contribution towards something. So I guess you'll need to clarify if you want to have the three distinct buckets or kind of the two buckets over here that you pick from. And then we definitely agree that you got to pick something from the design bucket as well. As for number, you know, if it's just one from each or if we want more, I guess that would be your call to make on that, if I'm capturing that correctly.
And I'm still in that boat. I still think it's a two-bucket kind of approach. It's just one of the buckets is the cozy and the affordable. Because I think whenever you're developing that affordable, whether it be business use or affordable housing, you're still going to have things like lobbies and, you know, and community spaces are going to be incorporated in those types of projects or they're not marketable. So I guess I'm still not that concerned about it and I think I'm with you, which is it's a two-bucket approach, just that one bucket has the affordable or cozy in it and then we still want some design standards. That's what I would advocate for. I mean, I would, again, I would say it's, you must provide either three, four, or seven, or the alternative to one of those three is eight or 10. And then also incorporate some mitigating factors amongst the other ones to deal with your size and scope.
Could it, does it need to be written that way or could it just be pick one from three, four, seven, eight, or 10? And then another bucket, which is pick one from one, two, five, six, and nine?
Yeah.
Is there a distinction there that I'm missing?
No, I guess not. I guess not. I think you're right, now that you say that.
Okay.
Valid point.
So we are down from four.
I just want to make sure I'm following.
That's, that's what I'm advocating, that's what I would advocate for. I think that gets to what I was concerned about, but I'm just one vote, so.
Could you just refresh, so now we are down to two buckets and two items? And the buckets are what?
So the two buckets, as I understand it, I would like to say it just so that I can give clear direction on writing this up the right way, is that you have one bucket which deals with creating that sense of place and/or offering some type of affordability community benefit. And so your options, if you're going through this waiver process, would be number three, which is the public plaza, number four, the community meeting space, number seven, the provision of ground floor facades that include additional supporting storefronts, or the provision of incubator space on site, or the provision of affordable housing on the development site. And so you would have, you'd pick from that and put forward that as part of your project. And then you'd have a second bucket and you would pick one of the following items to include in your site plan. That would be an innovative building technique, which is really around kind of environmental features. Or you could create architecture that creates some distinctive or iconic community landmark. Or you would create pedestrian-oriented creative lighting that's incorporated into the landscape to help create that sense of space. Or create, get a LEED certification, earth advantage, or other type of environmental certification. Or install public art consistent with what we've outlined. And I did want to point out that in the public art, that part of the direction we got from council was to make that highly interactive public art, which is getting a bit at what Commissioner Mespa was talking about. Did I get it right? To what you guys are capturing at this point?
My approach, the way I was.
I'm fine with it.
Good job.
The only, the only addition is that this is not just a random pick, right? Because if you have somebody proposing a public meeting space and you just approve the public meeting space next door to it, well, that's not what we need here.
Yeah.
Maybe we need outside kind of lighting or something, you know? So it needs to be thoughtfully approached as opposed to random pick whatever you want.
Would that be, within the code, require like that there's a justification or an exception, like planning director exception or just approval, something like that? That would get around that?
Well, that's why I went to, you know, I would like to see some assessment of what the impact and needs are by staff, not necessarily a thorough analysis of this, that, and the other thing, but, you know, something like, we really don't need public art here because across the street, we just built a huge public art monument or whatever. We need something else.
So I think the language then needs to somehow open that door. Because I think the way it's written now, if you're being clear and objective and you're saying, pick that, pick one of these and pick one of these, that we get, then when we get a proposal, we get pushed back when we're trying to say, well, no, you already have that one there, so you really should do this one. Because they're going to say, well, no, we're following what's in the code.
Right.
So we need to come up with some kind of sentence that clarifies that, you know, that there is, you know, that pick one of these demonstrating the need or.
Considering adjacent land uses and the like or something like that? I mean, is that?
Yeah, considering or considering the need or appropriateness in the surrounding context or something.
Yeah, I have to massage that language, but.
That's why the word mitigation came up in our discussion. To me, this is part of mitigation. You don't need another piece of art if you already have one. You're not mitigating that.
You could say that you pick one from each category. You could say that you pick one from each category. And I mean, I think we struggle with having code that relies upon staff to defend an applicant's request for something different from the code. I think our preference generally is that the applicant needs to demonstrate why what they're choosing is suitable and appropriate. So, because, you know, again, it comes back to, they're the ones really that need to be defending their waiver request. When we take a waiver to the DRB, we're saying, you need to justify your waiver. So I do, I do feel a little cautious about putting it on staff to justify what they're providing. I think there, maybe we add a statement that says that it must be demonstrated that the chosen criteria are, meet an identified need within the town center.
Sure, sure.
And have, you have something like that.
Sure, sure.
And it is still a waiver. I mean, you're still looking at DRB to look at that objectively to say, you know, does, you know, is this meeting a need? I mean, that might be language that works pretty well. I mean, I think, I think coupling that with looking at adjacent uses might be what you need.
Can I propose something based on what I just heard?
That'd be fantastic.
Before you do that though.
Okay.
Being the only member on this body that hasn't served on the DRB. I'm fine with what you're saying, that the developer is going to say, this is what I propose to do. When that goes to the DRB, do staff not critique it?
We do.
That's all I need.
Yeah, okay.
I want to make sure that staff are looking at it and are calling BS in effect.
And more importantly, the DRB critiques it as well.
But staff certifies compliance to existing code and whatever guidelines have been adopted.
We do, yeah. Typically on waivers, we are a little more silent in terms of, and again, this gets back to what I was saying before. Well, this gets back to what I was saying before about the kind of, I don't want to call it loosey-goosey, but the more subjective nature of our site design review criteria and objectives and purposes and, you know, because, you know, on one hand, as far as we're concerned, our standards are our standards. And so again, gets back to that clear demonstration that.
I understand.
What you're proposing functions better. So I think if we have text that clarifies that.
To clarify, I kind of went back and said, this is what we used to do. We used to deal with quantifiable stuff, not subjective stuff. So when, as the Director of Planning Commission or Director of Environmental Resources, I had an analysis of the impacts, environmental impacts of a project, that was it. Nobody, nobody could poke at that because I was the expert for the government saying, this is the impact. If you want to bring expert witness that says this is not the impact, then we can debate that. Otherwise, this wasn't subjective, in other words, it was very objective. So that word kind of cut through all of that. I understand you don't have the same level of objectivity in what we're dealing with here, and I understand your discomfort with having to stick your neck out on that.
Cozy is very hard to objectify.
No, we can define it, come on.
Well, I think that's the second, the second part of the job of the Development Review Board. Actually, they do have a quasi-judicial, but it's quasi. They have the ability and responsibility for reviewing, doing site review to see, is it consistent with the surrounding area? Is it consistent with the plan? And it is a bit more difficult, but that's why it's a volunteer citizen review board, just like us.
Well, I would argue.
Clarify it.
I would argue it still needs to be objective in that regard because I think that's one of the pushbacks I had always provided on DRB is, is that it is, sure, it's quasi-judicial, but it is still judicial of sorts. And so, but that's where the language that you were talking about kind of circles us back there. If you're considering both adjacent uses and needs of the town center area, we're giving DRB the tool to say, okay, is this, are we, is this builder going to put in meeting space right next to a project that also just put in meeting space, which makes no sense? Are they putting in, are they hoping to mitigate by putting in public art when they've got a big old piece of public art that's visible right across the street, right? That gives the, should give the DRB the tool to say, eh, no, we probably need you to head elsewhere amongst the criteria, the waiver list, right?
And I think one thing we could do too.
I'm trying to get you there.
Just alternative to you when I'm done, but you know, as we start, as we start getting applications, I mean, this is one thing that we can track though. As we start approving things under the town center code, if we do have waivers, I mean, that's a history that we can then track.
Sure, with this one with large floor plates, you get two of them done and you're too late.
Right.
Right? I mean, we probably only have one crack at this in town center before it really throws the thing off if we don't get it right. So, I mean, I would normally agree with you if it's a, if it's a couple houses, that's one thing, but one 50,000 square foot project and we may regret what we did.
Yeah.
Does our illustrious planning director have a proposal?
I have some proposed language to the introduction. So if we were up there and we're looking at the end of, yeah, perfect. So we'd be allowing this waiver in the MU and CMU sub-districts consistent with the provisions of Section 4.118.03. If one item from each of the two following menus are met in a manner to go substantially above and beyond code requirements and typical building and site design to create a sense of place, mitigate negative impacts of the project related to the reason for the waiver and based on need in the context of adjacent sites or surrounding area.
Or taking account of.
And then you do the number list like you threw out the number, like we've been talking about the numbers for a little bit. Divided into two buckets.
Or you can rearrange those so that they are bunched together so you don't have to go up and down.
That's what we would do. We would reorder and put them in the two lists that you've proposed.
Three, four, seven, nine.
That's the Twister game, right?
Exactly. I like it.
Go.
Okay.
Can staff live with that? I don't want to get you guys into trouble because you're getting sued left and right, you know?
Well, if we start getting sued, then we'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Amanda will take care of us then.
Yes.
It's the only point I had. I remember earlier today when Miranda told me I don't make things more difficult on her.
When do we get a crack at drawing more fine-grained code, architectural code? Or code of whatever sort affects this notion of sense of place and coziness? That still is a very nebulous concept.
We do have the streetscape design plan as one of the implementation actions, and so I think that gets to the public realm in between buildings, which I think gets to the cozy. That's, I'll leave it to Miranda for timeframe. I know that's not immediate term, but nearer term.
It is one of the implementation items we'd like to do in the next fiscal year, but we're obviously going through the budget process. I would also answer that the code that's in front of you tonight has a number of elements that are related to that in terms of pedestrian form, the building frontage, the scaling, where the parking is, the pedestrian connectivity, the distance between intersections. All of that is integrated into this plan to help to build that coziness or that pedestrian realm throughout town centers. So, I mean, there's quite a bit of detail in all of these code edits that you've talked about over the last several months. And so really the next step would be looking at that streetscape design plan and integrating kind of all those additional elements to making sure that we're getting the correct identity and feel for town center.
We already addressed the fine-grained things like facade articulation. Those are ultimately what's going to define cozy architecturally.
Yes. So there's a whole section in here about the facade treatments and there's the section about the awnings, particularly along the main street.
So Chair, are we ready for a motion then?
I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt LP 19-0003 recommending approval of the Wilsonville Town Center Plan and associated comprehensive plan text and map, zoning map and development code amendments, including the revision to the waiver language as read into the record by our planning director.
Oh, seconded, thank you.
He's been seconded, moved and seconded in what he said. Further discussion. Our last chance. Okay. Those, I'll, this is sufficiently a landmark point, so I'm going to call for roll. Commissioner Posma.
Aye.
Commissioner Hurley.
Aye.
Mr. Mesba.
Aye.
Commissioner Springall.
Aye.
Mr. Greenfield, aye, vote aye. The resolution passes five to zero, two absent. And that concludes our.
Marathon.
Consideration, yes. Our consideration of this public hearing item. City Council action minutes have been distributed. I'm sure they've been carefully studied. Are there any items to be taken back to council? We thank the council for this form of input. Our work program is still not fleshed out for the remainder of the year.
So the, as you, many of you may already know, the city council is not meeting to do goal setting until April this year. And so we do anticipate, once that process occurs and once we have a better sense of how the budget is moving forward, some of the additional projects that will get added to this list and be fleshed out more. There will be some town center implementation items that'll be coming to you. We're just not certain on the timeframe for those yet as we need to get through this important step in the process. But you will be seeing some code work that staff is working on and looking to do as well as Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. We're very excited to finally be kicking off that work. So your work plan will get full again. Enjoy a moment of deep breath. That's right.
We should expect to be meeting in May.
I hope so. We will keep you posted. But if not, I mean, you have had three public hearings already this year in three months, so you might be ready for a nice break. We'll see what we can do for you.
Just a little data, could you?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything further for the good of the order?
I'd have to say congratulations to Miranda. I don't know if I've actually noted that last time we met, I don't remember planning director being after your name, but it appears to be now, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm very excited for the opportunity.
Well deserved.
All right, then we are adjourned at 8:07. Thank you very much.